As well, a really hard worker, from what I've been told, knows elementary curriculum and has had a plethora of experiences from different schools and a lot of different things. So certainly, just like with any new job, there's a learning curve, but I'd hardly recommend this position. Again, having to look so close to the start of school, it was difficult and very carried, but I think we found a great candidate that I'm very proud to bring to you, to recommend, and hopefully get an opportunity to meet her here in a moment. There was an addition, now that I'm looking through, on assignments against the kingdom last minute of a cook. Several movements at the elementary with folks moving from one grade level to another as we shifted vacancies. Again, like I said in my notes, we have a lot of area schools that are reporting their kindergarten numbers are lower than they have been, and people were all assuming that's kind of the COVID lull. And so we only needed five sections of kindergarten this year, so we did move one of those teachers to fill a position, so we did not have to. So we had one open position, which is again, in this day of cuts that we've been talking about, is a help on the education fund, to not have to replace a position. Also, I would want to take a moment and welcome Carrie Neal upon your approval. The Assistant Director at Adams Wells Special Ed Cooperative, Julie Pettibone, moved back to Ohio to be with her husband, and she had been basically maintaining two residences, and they were trying to meet up on weekends, and it just became, I think, tiring and overwhelming. And so Carrie Neal has worked in special ed for a long time in Huntington County, and so she is being recommended for the position of Assistant Director, and she would be working with North Adams like Julie did upon her hire. So I've already met her, I'm very excited to work with her. She comes with a lot of experience working with more intense intervention students, a lot of experience, I believe, in working with autism. So we're excited to have her on our team. I think that's all the comments I have right now. Oh, sorry, one more. So you remember that you approved a policy a month or two ago that technical corrections of policy can be concluded in consensus items. And so there were four policies that did just have technical corrections. Two of them were just changing wills to shaws, literally. I think one was the addition of the word corporation after North Adams School Corporation. And then the other one, I probably don't remember. Now, that one was the one that added school in front of corporation. And then the third one, I think, was just an addition of a legal reference, yeah, a policy reference and a legal reference. So not much in technical corrections that changes the meaning, intent, or anything of substance. So those do not have to have a second reading when they're just technical corrections, that's why they're in the consensus items.
Any questions or comments or motion to approve the consensus items?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, second by Dave to approve the consensus items as presented. All those in favor, announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Approve seven to zero.
So at this time, since she's been officially approved, I'd like Nicole Screamton to come forward. Nicole is coming to us from East Allen, Southwick Elementary. I'm going to let her introduce herself and kind of tell you what her journey has been here, and very excited to have her on our team. I think she's going to be a great addition and work really well with our team.
My name's Nicole Screamton. I'm originally from Franklin, Indiana, but I started my journey in education up north. And so I've been in Manchester Community Schools. I was an elementary teacher there. I was also a NEAL director. And then I moved to East Allen County Schools, and I have been an instructional coach there the last several years. I'm looking forward to this opportunity, and I'm very excited to be here.
Because you're family.
Yes, I have my crew with me today. So we have the twins, Austin and Elizabeth. They are both in fifth grade. And then Beau is here, he is in second grade. And then the caboose is three. She had a birthday last week. That's little Miss Lainey.
Aww.
We're very excited to be here.
Yeah.
And then my husband, Eric Screamton, he works at Leo High School. He's the name of students there.
Well, welcome. And I can tell you, after my brief foray into grants, I am looking for a team.
I need to get started.
Well, welcome. And I told Nicole, since she has young kids with her, and I'm sure they have to get up and go to school tomorrow, she doesn't need to stick around. But thank you so much for coming down, and we are looking for you. East Allen was willing to not hold the 30 days, so hopefully, I think, Monday now that we have board approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So mail program update tonight. Next up, we have our community department update. Vanessa Bittner with Lifewise Academy.
I have a little handout for your guys' ref. I do not normally read off the little paper, but I wanted to make sure I kept under our time limit, so I wouldn't ramble. But the papers I just passed out, they contain QR codes to go to our policies and procedures, just our general handbook that has been approved by the principal, myself, our support center from Lifewise, as well as our strategic plan that lists our next plan for the next three to four years. You may need my access to, I might need to approve you to, for the QR code, but I will do that as soon as I'm able to. And then that also adds
I know.
As my email, the link to our website, and our Facebook page. So, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Feel free to look at that paper at your own leisure. And please let me know if you have any questions or comments about it. My name is Vanessa Bittner, and I have the privilege of serving as the Program Director for Lifewise Academy North Adams. I began this role in April 2024, and since then, I have worked to establish the program UC operating today. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share a brief update on where we are and where we hope to go. Our program officially launched last January on the 13th, and we served 104 students throughout, but consistently 101 students in grades first through fourth. Each student attended once a week during their computer lab time. And the schedule was developed in collaboration with Mrs. Hutter and the specialist teachers to ensure minimal disruption to the school day. Our, as with any new program, we faced a few challenges. Some were simple communication gaps, such as not always knowing when Lifewise was paused for field trips or special events. Others were unique situations, like an extreme thunderstorm that kept us from returning or go with students. Last year, there was one really bad one, and we were like, what are we going to do? It's not safe to venture out right now. But we have learned, and we have added those policies to our policies and procedures as well. We've learned from these experiences and are putting the new systems in place to improve communication and flexibility moving forward. Lifewise exists to serve not only students and their families, but also the school as a whole. For example, during last year's very brutal flu season, we prepared small get well packages for the teachers. We are also exploring more ways to be a resource, whether by volunteering at events or offering small tokens of appreciation to the staff throughout the year. Our classes will begin August 18th, so next Monday, and our second enrollment period will remain open until September 15th. None of this would be possible without your support. I tell everyone who will listen how grateful I am for this school board, for your openness to our program, and your dedication to the students and families of the district. I'm proud to tell Belmont my hometown school. I think a lot of other Lifewise programs, you're probably not familiar, but we're, this program is in over 1,000 schools all across the country, and I think we honestly have one of the best school boards. You guys have given me very little brief, if not any. The principal has been amazing to work with. You guys should just really be really proud of yourselves, because anyone who will listen will be like, I have the best school board backing me. So I'm just really, really, really grateful for you guys. So thank you for your time and your trust and your continued partnership.
Thank you. Vanessa, just real quick, what are some of your goals for expansion, or what are you thinking?
So right now, our program is basically limited just by its resources. We have the ability to grow in, as far as enrollment, but only based on our, only based on the resources that we have right now. So our cap, so last year, our enrollment was 101. Our cap for this year is going to have to be 120, just to do some logistical things, our space size, our vehicle that we're able to use, our teacher hours, that sort of thing. As we're able to gain more financial support, we're able to expand the program and be able to have no capital. So we're really just waiting on those resources to be able to expand the program even larger.
And you said that students can enroll up until September 15th, right?
So our classes, the first enrollment period closes August 18th, and then those students who are enrolled that day will begin that week. And then between the 19th and the 15th, students who enroll will begin on September 15th. This was just a policy that Mrs. Hutter and myself put in place to ensure new students weren't enrolling just every week, so that teachers would be able to kind of keep track of that a little bit more clearly. We really want to make everything as seamless as possible, especially for our teachers, because they already do so much. We're just not going to try and inhibit them any more than we already have to.
And what is your goal to do with the students in the time you have them?
I'm sorry, what?
What is your goal to do with the students?
Yeah, so our program, the way that it kind of works is we have what we call the head, the heart, and the hands. So the head is our Bible story, so what they're actually learning, reading through the story. And then the heart is what we call our Jesus connection. So every single lesson, we tie it back to the gospel, because our ultimate goal is to use these character traits to teach kids how to be better people. And our ultimate example of that is Jesus. So we tie everything back to Him, and then our hands is the character quality trait that they learn that week. So for example, if that week, we learned about a story that taught us about respect, then we teach the kids what the word means, and how to live it out, and also how Jesus lived it out, so that they get kind of that visual example of exactly the best way to go about it.
I appreciate you coming in tonight.
What grade you're eligible with? What grade?
First through fourth grade.
Those four alone?
Yep.
Thank you very much. No old business, so new business, first item is consideration of policies.
We've got a big old packet. I wish I could say this is it, but this is just the July update. And all this, for the most part, is related to the legislation from the 2024 session, and these were the recommendations to current policies or new policies to meet those legislative changes. So the first one is real easy. It's one that somehow got missed in some of the other slew we've done before, 0165.4 is a bylaw. It was already absorbed into policy 0165, you recently approved. It just needs rescinded. So that is a very easy one. And again, these are all first reads, so this is time for questions, comments. I know I got Darlene's question, probably a good question. I need to read it more thoroughly. The next set of policies, I tried to group them by things that the legislation dealt with. So there was some legislative change this session in how, in human sexuality instruction. And so Policy 2221, mandatory curriculum, which starts on page seven of your packet, it just included, number one, the reference to personal financial responsibility as a required curriculum for high school students for graduation. And then it talks about requiring parental consent, including letting parents know the gender of the instructor, whether students are taught in same-gender groups or not, giving the parents the right to inspect materials being used to teach human sexuality, and access to allowable materials through our website, which we are currently trying to curate. So that's that policy that has the additions on that. And then Policy 2414 is specifically about reproductive health, family planning, and human sexuality instruction. Again, a lot of the same verbiage added. Emphasis is still on abstinence outside of marriage as the only means to guarantee and avoid disease pregnancy, the importance of consent in any relationship, age-appropriate visual education depicting fetal development from conception to birth, and also the requirement of written consent and the ability to review any materials used, again, in that instruction. So are there any questions on the human sexuality And again, if you have any later, please just email me. The next group has to do with attendance-related legislation. So there were a couple of additions in this legislative session of things that were allowable exemptions that did not count as an absence at all. And so those were spelled out to include, including armed forces, active duty, and also FFA and/or 4H exhibits for no more than six days, given certain parameters. The student has to be in good standing, the grades have to be good, can't have attendance issues otherwise, those kinds of things. And the big one that this legislative session, again, one of our state legislators' big pushes in education law was attacking chronic absenteeism. But this legislative act added that schools may not suspend or expel students solely based upon their attendance. And so that language had to get included. The second policy, 5223, that dealt with some attendance-related items was, again, had our Lifewise presentation, release time for religious instruction. You can have up to 120 minutes a week for elementary, and the time equivalent to one period for high school. And then three policies are pretty much just the one sentence about you may not suspend or expel a student for attendance-related reasons solely. That impacts Policy 5600, student discipline, 5605, which I think is suspension and expulsion of students with disabilities, and 5610, which is suspension and expulsion of students in general. Any questions about attendance-related policies? I will say, just because we have, I know a lot of folks who listen and watch, I did try in the newsletter to send out some information to allay some parent fears that I was hearing from some of our local healthcare providers, that I think the media had put out information that the legislative session was saying that going to the doctor, a counseling appointment, whatever, would not necessarily be an excused absence. And while the "not necessarily" part is in there, our absence policies have not changed from last year. Basically, the state just put a lot more in there that they're wanting to get a better handle on what different schools are counting as excused and unexcused, so that they can get a better definition developed. And they're going to start tracking a lot more through our Power School notations, what kind of absences are being logged, how many, for what reason. So we're going to have a lot of coding changes. But as far as what we allow and don't allow, I included an infographic that was the same as last year after that legislative passed. Basically, what I wanted to communicate to parents is certainly kids who have chronic or intermittent conditions or illnesses that they need to have ongoing care for, or counseling appointments, where we want your children getting those services. That only makes them better in the classroom, better at school, better for themselves, better for your families. And all you have to do is call in and work with your assistant principals at the high school, elementary, middle school, and they'll work with you on what kind of documentation you need, you know, making sure that you know your child's schedule, that, well, if you can't get it before school or after school, then, you know what, did you know that on Thursdays, they have this class, and that's going to be, or a homeroom, or a study hall, and that would be another good time to have an appointment that wouldn't necessarily take their reading block or something like that. So some of those kinds of conversations. I also, though, did point out that when we see patterns, again, it's not about a sole incident. When we see patterns of children coming often with script pads, or excuses, or notes from different providers that are from lots of different locations and don't seem to be addressing a common condition or a common illness, then we may start questioning that, because we want to make sure that that child is getting their access to their education and not missing so many days. And again, basically, the state also expanded from elementary that all the way up through high school, anytime a student has five or more unexcused absences within a 10-day rolling time period, we have to set up a conference with parents and the child to develop an attendance plan. I think they lengthened it from five days to 10 days after that first, or that fifth unexcused absence. So those are just some of the changes. Nothing was big on how we're doing things, it's more on what the state is doing and changing so they can track attendance, because chronic absenteeism is one of the things they're wanting to see impacted. The next group of policies deal with things related to parent rights. And so Policy 2410, audio, video, and digital recording of meetings. Indiana is a state that has always allowed a recording of any conversation, as long as the person doing the recording is a part of that conversation or meeting, and are a participant, not just an observer. This has broadened to address IEP meetings with students with special needs, that if a parent wishes to record, whether it's audio, video, or otherwise, they may do so. I can tell you, if, we are going to start every conference asking a parent if they wish to record the meeting, and that's fine. If they do, that's their right. If they record, we are going to record as well. And if we record, we are legally obligated to look at that as part of the student's educational record, and we have to archive it, just like we do our meetings tonight. I think until the child's 25 or 26. So we've been working on the cloud system and how to get that, but we've not had that, a lot of issues there, but that is just, again, that's another legislative change. 5771, we're not, no one seems to really know where this one came from. It was a big deal to somebody, and that's okay. But basically, all it's saying, if a student leaves school for any reason, and it could be from death to expulsion, to they withdraw and go to a different school, the parent gets first right to come and collect their personal items from their lockers, their desks, whatever. And typically, more parents, when we offer that, are more than happy for us to put them in a box or a bag or whatever, and have them ready in the office for them. But if they wish to go do that themselves, that is now legislatively their right. Any questions on those two? The next group deals with harassment-related items. Policy 5517, anti-harassment is a very big policy. Lots of pages, lots of changes. It reflects a lot of the Title IX changes that have happened. But basically, it goes through the new Title IX legislation, where the main emphasis on mandatory recording, what an investigation has to entail, when it has to be offered, what kind of documentation must occur, the resolutions, potential resolutions that need to be offered, if appropriate, and any of the follow-up requirements. So again, it's a lengthy policy, but it reflects Title IX and what schools need to do. I can tell you, this is a bigger deal than it ever has been, and we did special training with the whole district on one of our first teacher days on what is Title IX. We had a video that Church, Church, Tittle, and Antrim provided us, so that the staff would understand it's not anymore. Usually, when you said Title IX, a lot of folks think it's about how many women's sports and men's sports you offer, and making sure they have to be balanced. Well, that's, that's an outcropping of it, but it's really about sexual harassment and making sure that that is addressed and reported, and then dealt with appropriately. And so making sure they understood what it was, what needs to happen if they hear, any talk about it, see anything, and then a few of the steps, just again, 30,000-foot view, that need to happen. But the big thing is, if you see, hear something, you say something immediately. Do not wait. Don't pass go. It gets taken up the food chain. So right now, we also made sure that staff knew that I'm the Title IX Compliance Officer presently for certified staff and students, and then Scott Miller is our Title IX Compliance Officer, excuse me, for anything involving classified staff. We were very lucky, because Tiffany did go to a national training a couple of years ago, so she was very well-versed, and we had a lot of our policies tightened up and a lot of our forms and things. I wish it was something we never had to worry about, but unfortunately, in this day and age, it is. The other one I kind of put with this group is 5517.01, and it's specifically about bullying. The big changes here in the policy was just, again, and this is a Title IX, again, focused on the safety of the victim, and that the victim's needs are being met, as well as the new legislation. This one is a little bit more difficult for us to kind of figure out what it means, and I'm going to a school law thing here pretty soon, so I'll hopefully get a little more information. But the necessity within 24 hours of reporting to both parents of both parties, the alleged victim, the alleged bully, that there may be an incident of bullying that's being investigated. And sometimes we have to tell them that before we even know if it really is bullying, but giving notification. Any questions related to the harassment? The next group, it's not a group, it's just one, student assessment. This one just adds, again, the mandatory I read passage by the end of third grade in order to be promoted to fourth, as well as there's new legislation that is now starting to go down the same road with math, as we've gone down with literacy, which is a former math teacher. I like that, that we are to a point.
Science is right behind.
Yes, it is. And science will be right behind, is making sure that we are identifying early on if students struggle with math, so that we can get appropriate interventions and are using best practices in the instruction in math. Not just, for the most part, the focus has been on literacy for so long, I'm happy to see that numeracy is being looked at, too. The next one is an athletics-related policy. Again, this is pretty much a one-statement thing, so you probably heard and saw from IHSA, they received a lot of pressure from some of our legislative folks that the rule that students were not allowed to transfer schools on the basis of athletics only, they needed to repeal that, and they did. So our new policy says that at least up to one time in a given year, you may transfer, even if the sole purpose is for athletic participation. And that's been a big change in Indiana.
Yes.
Lots of different thoughts on that one. And then the final group are just hodgepodge. 1220, unfortunately, we had just approved, I think at our last meeting, or the meeting before, in Clemento the Superintendent. I'm still not sure why this change did not qualify for a technical correction, because it was a very minor change, I think just one word, one or two words. But they didn't qualify it as such, so that was just an addition that needed to happen. 6320 is a monster of a policy. It's all the financial stuff about how purchasing needs to happen. It's all the financial stuff about how purchasing needs to happen. It starts on page 68 of your big policy book. There are some things that you will need next meeting to kind of confirm or provide input on. So the things that are highlighted in yellow in different places are things that I wanted to have you consider. So what has been happening in the yellow is that the trigger point or threshold of different costs of what we purchase that happen between $50,000 and $150,000, we have to get at least three quotes for. That's been standard practice here. I would recommend we keep it in that range. The next one that has options is the next page, page 70, at the bottom in yellow. These are just options that we may, if desired, ask a potential bidder or vendor to provide information about their experience, their financial condition, performance on other contracts, so on, so forth. My recommendation is just to select all. We may not very often ask for this, but if there were a reason that we might want to ask some of those questions, because it's a "may" statement, not a "have to," might as well put it in there. If we don't need to use it, great. If we do, that's fine, too. On page 71, I talked to Beth about this, and so you see there's two options, A and B in the middle of the page. Her recommendation was to choose both. And so basically, what this is talking about is when we have a situation where we have to have bids and we're opening our bids, if a bidder, a vendor, determines that they have accidentally misquoted a bid, misfigured something, which does happen, can they rescind it, basically? And so our recommendation was, we'd rather be correct than, number one, stick a bid with something that they don't feel they're going to make money off of, which does not necessarily mean we're probably going to get great work, or we're going to end up having to pay later to fix something correctly. So basically, her recommendation was, choose both. Our recommendation is that they can provide notification to us, no later than five business days following the opening of the bids. And then also, if we find out a bid is correct, we can cancel the award of the contract. So again, our recommendation is to select both, see what we may need to do, what we didn't, that are needed to do. Next area for conversation is page 72. Different boards prefer different levels of involvement in some of the purchasing. What we have been doing and what we recommend we continue to do is the second option where the purchasing agent is authorized to make emergency purchases without having to come through the board first of those things that allow us to keep school in operation. So, for example, when we've had the boiler go out or whatever and we needed to get one ordered, we can go ahead and do that, and then you would get it at the next board meeting to approve it. So that's one recommendation that you have consideration. The next one is on page 76. I don't know that there was a big thought, one way or the other, for us. We recommend choosing all specifically identified purchases that are within a program as that kind of was broader, maybe made upon authorization of the purchasing agent. Again, this doesn't happen real often. And then page 77 at the top. Again, it's kind of a repeat of the other one. We have had the autonomy to, as a purchasing agent, authorize emergency purchases without prior approval. And we suggest continue that. In the middle of the page, A through E are all options. I recommended C and D minimally be considered. Then at the bottom of the page, I would probably, guess I didn't write in, I'm sorry, I didn't write in the recommendation for how long the lease agreement with the option to purchase. I'm going to do some work on that one because I don't know. I want to say probably five years, but I'm going to go look at that one a little closely and see what we've really done. Did recommend to take the option there, right above procurement, that as long as the cost is less than $50,000, the purchasing agent can go ahead and purchase it. We did want to select the procurement with federal grants because we do get some federal grants, so that language needed to be in there for us. And that gets us to the end of that policy that's very complicated, but one of the main things that Beth deals with every day. And we're glad to do that. Then the last one in that miscellaneous group was supplemental payments for teachers. And I had recommended, this addresses the legislation that allows the superintendent or the district to provide supplemental payments to recruited staff. And basically, this legislation didn't put a lot of restrictions on what we can offer it for. And this one was not from this July 25. This one was from last year, if it's in the best interest of the corporation. So previously, that had to go through discussion or negotiations, and then discussion became a, after the 23 session, discussion became voluntary, basically optional. So now, certainly best practice to at least notify your teachers' union and discuss with them how much. And we've kind of had that informal conversation with NADA that as we start each negotiation session or here in the first of the year, let them know how much in supplemental payments we offer in order to recruit, retain staff, just so they kind of know when we get into bargaining, what, in addition to what has been just the new hire contract or schedule, excuse me, on the back of the master agreement, how much more has been offered so that, again, take it off the top of our bargaining amount that they're thinking or we're thinking. So that's what this one addresses. I did recommend option one. We are in teacher shortages. We are in a situation where we're often trying to recruit from other districts, and money is one of those things that's going to talk and is going to get people to come or stay, unfortunately. Fortunately, it's just human nature and life. Any questions on any of these? I know, Darlene, do you want to raise your question?
So, I'm on the privacy policy.
Twenty four sixteen, page thirteen.
Yeah, it starts on thirteen. The part that I had issue with was at the bottom of fourteen until the top of fifteen.
Okay.
Basically, it says the board can collect personal information, use it for marketing and selling information, and it includes a whole host of things as far as that personal information, names, addresses, social security numbers, telephone numbers. I don't see a reason for that to be in there.
Is that in that second full paragraph, or is it?
The bottom of forty.
Oh, bottom. Okay, that's true. What would the purpose be of selling?
I was going to say, what would be?
Especially social security identification.
Yes. And I understand that when they're getting kids set up for college classes, they use the social security number to get them registered, but that's not selling or marketing.
I'm thinking on that piece, I think that section is talking about a survey that kids may be given, and the survey or the outside organization may ask some of that information, and then they can use it. And that's why it gives the parent the right to review, decline any survey that we may give students. I can tell you.
I would never.
I would never.
Take my child to put their social security.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Isn't there a part in registration for this, too, where you can opt out of any of that?
I think there probably is because we have to have written consent. We, yeah, there's so much of that anymore that we don't really participate in too much of that at all.
There is also kind of a typo in that, bottom of fourteen, second paragraph left, the first line, "Board will allow permits to collection."
Okay.
She could want to.
Probably allow.
I'm wondering if one of those words is supposed to be "not."
So, will not allow.
That would make more sense.
Yeah.
I'll have to go back and look. This all comes from Niola, so you cut and paste what they.
I don't feel comfortable giving our kids information to anybody.
No, I agree. I'll go and look.
Especially since my kids' information's in there. I really think that's what it is.
I think it probably is an omission. Okay, I'll look at that.
Good catch, Darlene. Save all of our kids' credits.
They'll be able to buy a house.
Yeah. Well, that might be pushing, and they might not be able to buy a house anymore, but just love good credit.
It's a worry, isn't it?
Whereas the parent has the co-signer. Saves your credit, too.
Again, if you have any other questions or comments, please just email me or call, and we can work through them. It is hefty. I know a lot of them, it's nothing surprising based on the legislation that there are things just like that, but sometimes get omitted. Thank you for that.
Next item on our agenda is the Belmont Middle School Athletic Handbook Read.
So this was sent with your packet, which I know some of you had some issues getting some of that opened, again, their first readings. This is not something that's been brought to you before. This is something that Tim Myers did, according to him, back in 2009, 10, that he, you know, he's received a couple of distinctions for being, I'm not going to get this right, the National Intermediate Athletic Association or something like that. And he's reached a certain level of distinction. He's going for the master certification, and as part of that, you have to do a, complete a project in intermediate athletics. And he's like, well, I've already done this because I've done two handbooks back in the day. And I think he did, he said he did send them to Scott, and Scott looked them over. So basically, for him to be able to apply for this master, I'm going to have to say, certified master athletic administrator, he has to have board approval on these projects. So that's why this is coming.
I can tell you, I reviewed them the first time they were submitted, and I reviewed them again this time.
Okay.
I can speak to a couple. Because I didn't have any problems.
Great, thank you. And good for Tim on going after something we learned about.
Well, I also think it's needed in our middle school program.
Yes.
I mean, we keep adding more and more sports to it with coaches and everything else like that, so.
Yeah.
It's what's expected.
It is. And it can save you when untoward things happen.
Next up is the approval of the BHS course changes.
So just like every year when you are asked to approve these, some of them are just new titles of old courses. There's a few additions with the new diploma requirements. We went, it's amazing how things cycle back in education. I don't want to be one of those old people that say that, but, you know, a few years ago, when I first came here, we had all these different art classes. You had the drawing and the painting, and then they wanted to put everything together, and it was 2D and 3D. And now we're going back to separating them out again. So there's some of that, just, again, trying to give kids more, I think, elective choices and more pointed athletic, or elective choices. There was one change that we went from one of the courses being an AP class to dual-credit, which usually is a positive for our kids because that's something more kids are able to access. Not every kid's going to get a three or higher on their AP exam that will be accepted at a university. So that's a good thing. Glad to see that happening. And so, again, just need to approve those things with the auditor, so they say we have permission to offer them.
Any questions or comments or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second? Seconded by Darlene, motion by Wiley, seconded by Darlene to approve the BHS course changes as presented. All those in favor, announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Approve seven to zero. Next is the approval of the Tri-Share Plus Employer Agreement.
I don't know how much this is going to end up being a revenue plus for us, but as I've been telling you, with the state cuts to On My Way Pre-K and what we anticipate is going to happen with CCDF, so again, just to review, On My Way Pre-K previously had just a global over $340 per week reimbursement for those folks who qualified by their household income. We have never charged families that much, but it did help for those folks who qualified to cover part of what it costs to cover the whole program. And it's an expensive program. Our preschool vest and our preschool transportation is well over $400,000 a year itself, between salaries, benefits, curricular fees, and that probably doesn't include too much transportation. And we run two buses, and they're pretty much on the road five hours a day, taking kids back and forth. So this has been pretty devastating when we were, and I don't know, Wiley's probably had his ear to this one, too. We really felt we were on the cusp of universal preschool two years, last year even, two years ago, because that was the word on the street. That's why these vouchers were getting subsidized so much more that the state was going to come forward, and it would just basically be like K to 12, but it would be pre-K to 12 in that schools or probably even some private entities would get so much reimbursement from the state per kid for quality pre-K as part of kindergarten readiness. So we were very surprised when the decision was made to have what they were reimbursing providers for, but also they capped the number of vouchers that could be given out in the state at a very small number, basically. And so it kind of came to the point that if you didn't have a voucher already, it was going to be hard to get one, and that's what we're seeing with our families right now. And so that's impacting our revenue source for preschool and our childcare. CCDF, which is what we use for three-year-olds, and it's a different reimbursement voucher from the federal government, already has 22,000 kids on a waiting list.
Oh, gee.
Because lots of families who've had On My Way Pre-K are now trying, and are eligible for CCDF, are trying to transfer there. And so we are in an early childhood crisis in our state right now, again. And it's kind of sad because we had been for years and years and years. And I know, again, when I first got into education, and I wasn't an elementary person, so I didn't pay as much attention until I got in this seat, but I've been saying for years how more kids needed access to quality pre-K and just quality childcare for families because most of us need to work now to maintain a home and a family. And having affordable childcare for kids is huge because, number one, there's not that many, especially for kids under three. And having it be affordable is a whole other discussion, especially depending upon your household income. I think there's a lot of folks who choose not to work sometimes, at least one of the parents, because they can't afford to pay childcare and work and have any money. So I have been looking for other revenue streams, and this was something, I met with Colton Bickel from the Economic Development Council, because that's one of their big pushes for Adams County is early childhood education. And so we did receive information about the Tri-Share Program. So even if it's not a great fit for us this year, I am excited about it for our community. So basically, it is a pilot this year in Adams County. It's been in Noble County for a bit, I think, and maybe Steben, I'm not sure. But basically, it is a grant that the State Economic Development Council received. And what happens is a provider, an employer, and an employee kind of make a relationship with one another. And if the employer agrees to pay a third of the childcare or pre-K costs, the employee pays a third of childcare pre-K, and then this grant will pay a third of the childcare or pre-K. So this year, Adams Memorial Hospital is participating as the pilot for Adams County in it. And so when I met with them, they're like, oh, we're just now starting. We have a few dollars. And so when I met with them, they're like, oh, we're just now starting. We have a few dollars left over. Would you like, because we're not going to have that many staff here. And we had been trying to provide childcare and pre-K for our staff for free and we were going to up it to just a minimal amount, nominal amount this year. Like that could at least be another thing to just help offset trying to give a perk to our staff. So we're going through that process. There's a lot of hoop jumps with it, but I'm not sure how much we're, again, we don't have that many staff this year compared to other years. Last year, we had had close to twenty staff members' kids. And so that was a pretty good amount because that was most of our afternoon childcare numbers. This year, we only have about six to ten, somewhere in there. Lori, is that right? Six to ten staff? So it's not nearly the number, but again, we're just going to continue to try to share revenue streams. But as part of that, we have to have an MOU with this organization. And so that's what's in front of you for us to continue to try to work with them to provide a benefit to our staff. Now, what I will tell you, you see two things on the agenda. One is we redid our rates. There is, our staff will not pay any more than we've already told them they're going to pay. They're not going to pay more than the twenty dollars for the afternoon post-morning pre-K and pre-K. But also for the On My, On My Way Pre-K, we decided and were told, you need to have a rate sheet that shows the hundred and forty-seven dollars that On My Way is reimbursing you for because they're going to start looking at how much providers are actually charging. And if you aren't charging that much, they're not going to give that family that much. So whether we choose to do an in-house discount, which is what we're calling it, this is what we're charging. If you get a voucher, great. It pays for it. If you don't, we're going to not charge you any more than we told you we were going to charge you. And we'll basically eat it, for lack of a better word, because we want our kids kindergarten ready. This is going to be something we're going to work really hard at because I do believe very strongly that pre-K is very important for every child, but especially in a community where we have a lot of working parents. And we've seen the difference that kids going to pre-K makes for them being ready day one to access curriculum, just know school procedures, going to lunch, standing in line, waiting their turn. It makes a huge difference. And we, again, way before I was here, Wiley, I don't know when it started, if that was your addition or what, but making a choice to invest in early childhood education even at our own expense was, it's very important. So that's what this is about and it's what the next one is about where we redid the rates. Again, we are not going to charge anyone different than what we approved last time, but this is for, in anticipation that the reimbursement rate of some of these revenue streams are probably, we need to maximize what we're able to charge because we have been very, wow, very affordable compared to other places.
Any questions or comments or a motion to approve the Tri-share plus employer agreement?
Yeah, I'm pleased with the Tri-share. It's a very positive program. So as long as that grant holds out.
It is. They said they have it approved for at least five years. So I definitely have already talked to our folks at the elementary to let us know kind of where, what, what businesses we see a large number of our pre-K kids coming from. Because then after this pilot year, other companies can get interested.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joel. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Joel to approve the Tri-share plus employer agreement. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Approve seven to zero. Next is the approval of the updated best daycare rates.
And that's just the rates that we adjusted to kind of, again, when we ask for reimbursement for some of these programs to maximize what our reimbursement rate can be.
Questions or comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Darlene. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Darlene to approve the updated best daycare rates. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Approve seven to zero. Next item is the approval of the North Adams Food Services Agreement with parochial schools.
So I think we only have two parochials that actually use our food service program. Erin did increase fairly nominally how much she is charging just because our lunch rates increased too and so does production for how much staff get paid to do their jobs. So get ready to send out those bills.
Any questions or comments or a motion to approve?
What's the cost? Like, do we break even? Like, are we needing any of that?
Oh, yeah. We increased it. Well, that's going to probably be another discussion. No, we don't break even. It's pretty, it's a lot closer than it used to be. I would say right now, we're not losing hand over fist like we were three years ago. But it's not, we're not making money off of it.
So even when we, our equipment goes bad, we're the ones replacing it, but yet we help them out. So I'm almost wondering, future reference, we start charging a little bit more, just in case.
At least break even.
Yeah.
I think that's a discussion I'd like to have with you folks just because things are becoming so much more expensive. Erin's really increased her production staff pay just to try to, again, recruit and retain from fast food, for example. So some of those things are things I think we need to talk about. Just, we don't need to lose money for something as a service.
Right.
Take it to them, correct, too?
I'm not talking about like filling a budget with it, but.
No, it is breaking even.
Yeah. Rather than costing our school money.
Transportation's a similar conversation.
Any other questions or comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joel. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Joel to approve the North Adams Food Service Agreement with parochial schools. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Approve seven to zero. Next is the approval of the MOU with IWU Step Up Program candidate.
So this is a young woman who had worked with us as a skills coach for a couple of years and did a great job and really impressed Renee and her team. And when we had an opening in our special ed department, the elementary was very interested in seeing if she could transition. I don't know if you remember, not the state changed licensing for special ed a couple of years ago where you cannot get an emergency permit any longer to be a special needs teacher, but there are several other options that have popped up since then. So we currently have one staff member that's already in this program that is working toward their special ed endorsement and bachelor's degree through IWU. So this person would be the same kind of situation. Basically what happens is we as a school agree to pay for their tuition and fees. It's a discounted rate with IWU, so less than anyone else would be charged if they were going there. It's also an accelerated program and so the person finishes faster, which works better for everyone. Because until you actually get that degree, you can't do an IDP, for example. And so somebody else is probably getting a stipend to help with the paperwork and things like that. The other piece though, that, that the payment this person receives from us is basically our tuition, fees and cost are, is the balance. What they get paid is the balance of what a first-year teacher is minus what our tuition, fees and costs average is for that person for that year. So we're getting somebody who is becoming a special needs teacher or a teacher, because it's not just special needs in this program. This particular person is in our special needs program. Costing us what a first-year teacher costs. And accelerated program. And then we also, as part of the MOU, they agreed for us doing this to stay at least five years or they have to reimburse us prorated however long they would stay.
You had to stay for so long.
Yes. Because otherwise it's a big investment to not reclaim the reward. But special ed is a major shortage area. There aren't a lot of people that you're going to get. Most schools struggle to get their special ed rosters filled. And again, this, this, because she's worked for a skills coach, she knows our kids. She's worked with some of our kids who have different struggles and knows how to work with them, knows our processes, our procedures. Knows our team already, so it was a great fit.
How long until, like, how long is the program until we think should be certified?
Well, this young lady has a communications bachelor's degree already, so it will be much faster. It could be within a year.
Nice.
How they have that transition. When they start with a bachelor's in anything, it's a much shorter process. But we've had people start with a little bit of college and then they've had people, some of them, they're actually targeting our, our folks who are paraprofessionals that have no college credits. But it's still not going to be a four-year program. I think at most it's two and a half to three years if you start with nothing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks. Motion by Jill, is there a second?
I'll second.
Dave. Motion by Jill, seconded by Dave to approve the MOU with IWU Step Up Program candidate. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Approve seven to zero. Next is the approval of the twenty-five-twenty-six Bowen Health Service Agreement for Mental Health Services.
I'm going to kind of talk about Bowen and Park Centers because they're the same type agreement for us. There were no changes to these agreements and we have no financial commitment to either one of those organizations. Basically, this is just an MOU that allows their personnel to come in and meet with students who are their clients here. Usually Park Center are, have a, have a relationship with their client that has been started outside of school. Bowen, usually we are helped, we are part of referring, the referring process unless they have a family wraparound service going on and then they also may service their, their children here. But again, Park Center, we don't have a ton of, of staff coming in. Bowen Center, we could have anywhere from fifteen to twenty-two skills coaches a year in here, working with kids at different times. Usually fairly regularly, like some of them are here every day, working with multiple kids across every day. And it's a, it's a big help. It's number, it's more hands and feet, number one. But number two, they make a relationship with the kid. They're seeing exactly what the behaviors are in the classroom setting. And so point of service is a strong, strong thing there. Especially when they're working with potentially a psychiatrist or therapy too. It is very helpful.
Any questions or comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dave. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Dave to approve the Bowen Health Services Agreement for Mental Health Services. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Approve seven to zero. Go on for approval with the Park Center MOU as well. Any questions, comments or motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
Motion by Joel, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jill. Motion by Joel, seconded by Jill to approve the Park Center MOU for Mental Health Services. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Approve seven to zero. Next is the approval of the Adams County Memorial Hospital Mental Health Services MOU.
So this one, we do have a financial commitment and it did go up again this year. We're all in financial straits. A local hospital's no different and often they're running their mental health program at a deficit. So I want to be very aware of that and conscious, they do provide the therapist, the licensed therapist that actually come and work with our kids on site. And we have, I think, I forget how many hours. It's around twenty-some hours a week that we contract with them to come in. So it is a huge positive for our families who again, may work and struggle getting off work to get their children to a regular counseling appointment. And it's great to have that service here that our social worker and guidance counselors can help facilitate that relationship. I am concerned about the cost going up annually, but again, their cost is going up annually as well. So it's probably something that we're going to have to talk about in years to come. But that's something I'll be talking to Dr. Smith and Baltimore Silva some more about and see what options we might have. We might have to look at numbers of hours. We might have to look for some outside support funding or something. But we're very appreciative of the work they do because it's very needed and we always have a waiting list of students who need a therapist and just, we're maxed out on hours. So again, I recommend that we approve it tonight with the idea that I'm going to continue to have some discussions about what we might be able to do to make the cost a little more palatable.
Do they do this with all three, like, schools, Amcentro-South Adams, or just more of North Adams?
I think they do. I think we get more services because we're paying for more.
That was my next question. So is it all like a flat fee between all three schools or is it just by services?
By amount of services.
Is some of the cost transferable to an insurance provider, health insurance?
I'm trying to. I wish my social worker was here. We have, one of the providers I know, we. Yes. I don't know that all the cost to us is trans, I do think the individual at times is having their insurance ran. But sometimes this is like for the kids who can't pay. So we're covering that. Bowen Center, I believe, is the one that deals with most of our students who are on Medicaid.
That's what I was going to ask, is, is there a breakdown of what each facility has to offer? Is it different? Is it just like a certain population or insurance bank?
Bowen, I, I do believe is our Medicaid provider, but their services are simply skills coaches. They do not send any licensed therapists.
I know if I put a referral in for a kid, a lot of times they'll run it through their insurance if they have it and then TCS will get the remaining balance of that. And that goes like placement facilities too.
Those are the benefits that have changed. It's, it used to be much more open to that and yet.
And there's a lot of organizations that no longer take Medicaid because of the red tape that you have to go through to process that. And mental health is definitely one of those that several organizations no longer take Medicaid. And we're also concerned, now that we're talking Medicaid, Medicaid's getting cut starting January one for many, many families and many kids. And depending upon the type of service program they're on, I'm assuming some mental health services might be cut for some kids depending upon the type of Medicaid they have. And so that's, it usually doesn't touch the kids that don't need it, you know, the most. So that's another reason that I wanted to go ahead and find a way to make this work this year because I know we're going to have kids that are going to be losing their access otherwise.
Yeah, but I mean, this is just a question, but like, have you ever thought of just hiring somebody? Like, when I look at the cost, it's almost a salary. And I don't know what is out there just to have them on staff twenty-four, well, not twenty-four-seven, but during the school, school year, school days.
Don't we get to account for malpractice insurance?
I was going to say between that and the continued education.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say between that.
Okay, gotcha.
It's more than just the staff.
Just more than.
And unfortunately, this is, I mean, all healthcare is ever changing, but this particular, there's so much more of a demand now that it's, it's, it's tough.
Okay.
We have thought about it and it is, by the time you figure in benefits and then that particular situation and then to have to process the Medicaid yourself or process the insurance yourself at times, just to try to help. I don't know.
Yeah.
It might come to it. Getting a licensed counselor would be pretty expensive, but we definitely.
Also competing with the salary range too.
Yes. The turnover in the, Adams Memorial has been very stable, but the other two organizations have a very strong, very high turnover rate.
It's a hard area to work in.
It is.
Yeah, I know Park Center did. I used to be on the Park Center board for eleven years. It was kind of a rotating door.
And that's hard for those kiddos too.
Yes.
I know. But that is a very, we have explored it, but it's probably something I need to keep my eye before. You never know. You never know when we might encounter somebody who wants to be on their kid's schedule or is willing to. Take some cut to have that flexibility in their own.
Any other questions or comments or motion to approve? Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Darlene, seconded by Wiley to approve the 2526 Adams Memorial Hospital Mental Health Services MOU. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. Next is the approval of the 2526 Great Heights MOU.
So we are very blessed to have an ABA center, especially quality ABA center right here in Decatur. And it has been such a joy and so fulfilling just to see the partnership we've been able to have with them. Again, we transport some of our kiddos who get part-day services there if they want it. Just like our preschool kids that we take home. If they need dropped off at ABA, we drop them off there or pick them up from there. And it, we've seen a lot of growth in the kids that have chosen to go there and are able to go there in the services. So it's definitely something we want to encourage. We have a lot of our kids who do attend there on our ASD population. And the goal of this center, as it should be, is to get the kid back in school or to stay in school longer and to develop stronger skills to allow them to be more successful. So what they were wanting was an MOU that would allow their behavior techs, who are the folks who work individually with those kids at their center, to be able, as the kid is transitioning back to school or extending their day, to be able to come in and observe them so that they can work on different things in therapy, provide suggestions to the teachers, provide suggestions to the parents, work with the kid a little bit. They're not real, they don't want to provide therapy here. They just want to come in and observe their students who are transitioning. So if you remember, I think it was last year, you approved basically the template of this MOU that we got through Church, Church Hill and Antrim, a law firm in Indy, for a student who had an ABA therapist. Again, this, this person was not from Great Heights. They, it was an out-of-state, I think, therapy center that contracted with a therapist or behavior tech, excuse me. What I wanted was a template that we could apply with Great Heights clients that come to our schools that basically covers all the legal protections we wanted. And that it can just be filled in as we have some of these students because it's going to be probably relatively often. And I really don't want to have to bring back individual ones every time because the signature pages are still going to have to be there. The protections are still there. I had Scott look at it again. He made some suggestions. Their legal team has approved it. So I, I think it would be great. Again, they've been very good to work with and have, we've seen a lot of great strides with our kids who go there. So I think it would be a win-win to continue that relationship and have them help their kids transition back to school, back to full day, back to a longer day, whatever, whatever their needs may be.
You know, ABA and an effort for kids to do better in school is such a huge blessing. Unfortunately, that's happening so much more. And before that was even thought of, for someone coming in to observe in order to know how to give these kids therapies that they need so they can excel in school. And that was, had a lot of right, you know, it was just not very many people were willing to do that. And actually it's Wiley for us that let that happen. And that was huge for Austin. So I love this whole idea of wanting to meet our students on the spectrum where they are, give them what they need outsides that they can come back into the school where they need to be, where they need to be. So I think this is awesome. I have to make a motion to approve.
I'll second this. No more discussion.
Well, we've got a motion from Jill and a second from Wiley. Is there any other comments, questions, or vote to approve the 2526 Great Heights MOU? All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero.
I'm sorry, I didn't give a whole lot of room for others. I tried to steamroll that.
It's only passion there.
Approval of the adjunct teacher employment agreement and permit. So we did approve an adjunct teacher permit last year and as I looked at the permit, it is an annual renewal requirement. And so they are close to being done, but not quite done with their bachelor's and their program so that they'll transition to a professional license. But for right now, we need to continue with the adjunct. And so I just needed to renew the dates on it. And Dave will be abstaining.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second? Seconded by Jill. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Jill to approve the adjunct teacher employment agreement and permit. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved six to zero with Dave abstaining. Next is the approval of the donations. Belmont Elementary School in memory of Kelly Shinnberry.
So I didn't count how many people made a contribution that Kelly, as I told our staff the first day, we kind of take, took a moment to remember all the staff we have lost in the last five years. And it's been for a smallish district, it's quite a few. But what I really wanted and imparted to them was when Lori brought me the stack of things that the funeral home had sent us, folks who had made contributions in Kelly's memory. It was probably this tall. And what a testament to her and the impact she made. This was former students, colleagues, friends, staff, family. And such a sweet, sweet spirit. And certainly, I think my message to staff was, one of her favorite quotes, and I think we're going to put a mural somewhere or something, was "In a world full of hate, be a light," was "Be a light." And it really segued so nicely. Dave gave our implication that morning. But just the importance of loving on those kids, even the hard ones, that don't necessarily want to let you love on them, but they're the ones that probably need it the most. And just the fact that in all of our roles, seeds are planted every day, whether they take root and grow that moment or not at some point down the line. Our hope and prayer is that something takes root and it sprouts and it often does. And people like Kelly, we were so lucky that she had the calling on her heart to be an educator and to work with kids and serve kids. And as so many of the others that, that we honored that day, Dale Manus, Paul Gunset, King Dicky, Kim Frickdie, Gary Geisler, Lisa Stettler. Those were just, I think, I hope that I didn't leave anybody out that we, that we talked about or thought about that day. But just in the last five years, so many people who have made a lot of impact on a lot of people's lives. And they're not gone because their legacy has lived on because they took the time and had the passion to care about kids and love kids. And it was beautiful that Kelly had that opportunity to plan what her, what her memorial service would look like. And she chose for her memorials to go to our preschool program. So we're very thankful for everyone who contributed to her memorial. And we are definitely thinking about what we can do to make best use of those funds that will be a memorialization to her and what she did. She loved those, those kids, especially those little kids. Teaching preschool those last few years and being with those babies, she called them, was precious to her. And so I'm so glad that she got to do that. And that all of us got to know her and all these kids who had the blessing of having her, were able to see and know her and know her spirit and have her impact them in their lives. So I recommend that we accept all these donations in honor of Kelly Shinnberry.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
Motion by Joel.
Seconded by Dave.
Seconded by Dave. Motion by Joel, seconded by Dave to approve the donations to the Belmont Elementary School in memory of Kelly Shinnberry. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. Next is the superintendent report.
Well, we got the construction project done. It was right up to the eleventh hour. We did have one room that wasn't quite able to get in until a day or two later, but Mullen Camp and all their subs did a great job and really put in, I know, a lot of overtime this summer to get what I really honestly thought when we were talking about this in May, April, it, there was no way we were going to have the RAS hall in the elementary middle school anywhere near done. I figured it would be two weeks into school before they were there. We were walking down that hallway day one and I think Justin, you posted something today that kind of showed the before and after and showed the hallway bereft of carpet with a big trench down the middle of it with pipe and laying. And it's carpeted and it's solid and we're using it. So thanks to, first of all, all those teachers, because they had to pack right at the end of school, move everything out and then do amazing things to try to get everything packed in. And several of our students have been helping get some of their things slowly put in. So we appreciate the kids too. And our custodians had to put in a lot of extra time and some overtime getting floors ready and a lot of cleaning there at the last minute. Certainly our contractors did a great job. And grounds guys, again, they always, they impressed me. Just huge difference in what our campus has looked like and looking like. And very proud of them. And Scott doing a lot to try to, working with them and getting even just new fence and different small things, painting gates, things like that make a big difference.
Did they move all that stone with a wheelbarrow and shovel? Because that was a lot of stone.
We had a dump truck, but it probably was largely wheeled.
I was like, wow.
Well, we had some high school boys, I guess I should say thank you to them. We had several high school boys that worked with our custodians and on our grounds crew all summer and they got the grunt work jobs. So thank you to them.
It's good for them.
They might not agree, but they, you know what, they did it and they didn't complain and they worked hard and they, it definitely, we're going to miss them. Several of them are seniors and we're going to miss them because they, they worked hard and they didn't have to have a lot of direction. And very, very blessed to have them. First days of school, it, boy, it did not seem like August should have come around when it did, but it has. I don't know what happened to June and July, but they sped past. Our first two teacher days last week went really well. Flurry of activity. We're now in day four with kids, when several of our schools around here are just starting tomorrow. And I have to give it to our kids. I asked all my administrators that first student day. I'm like, is all the kids back? Because it just seems like yearly, smooth. What has happened here? But they've done a great job and really proud of them and proud of the staff. We are getting ready to launch Belmont Next Live on the online part tomorrow with those students. And that's been a heavy lift. So thank you to our middle school and, and high school admin and guidance counselors because that's been a lot of last minute, trying to figure out lots, basically it's an individualized learning plan for every kid that's coming in here because they're, each of them are talking about what they want. And it's ended up being a lot less of like all online and a lot more of kind of à la carte of, I've done homeschool or I'm on online, but I want to do this and I want dual credit for here and I want these electives. And so it's been a lot of learning curve for us. It's not a bad thing. I think it's going to be great when it's done. We're going to learn a lot this first year as well. We finally just decided that we'll work through it as we go along.
How many do we end up with?
Right now, I think we have about fourteen at the high school and I think four at the middle school. So about where I was hoping we would get, around in there. And, and that'll be a good workable number, I think. We can, we can manage that with the staff we have. Had pictures start today. My little boy likes to wear his suit. And I'm so glad that this year, hopefully we're not going to wear it three times a week like he demanded to do last year. But he had his whole suit on this morning for his yearly picture. So. With his spaceman backdrop. So they were so cute. All of them were so cute. And so I think the middle school's tomorrow and high school and elementary were today.
Yesterday.
High school was yesterday, sorry. They probably could handle the Monday. Other...
Eh, I don't know.
After a week, it's always hard for everybody. Other things that are upcoming, right now, we're still just kind of in August settling down. But in September, we will have our first flex day coming up. Is it September? Justin, I'm looking at you. I don't...
Tiffany's not here.
Actually, it was always my calendar person. It's in September and it's on the website with the calendar. We'll also have Fall Fest again this year.
September eleventh.
September eleventh, thank you. Fall Fest more in October and we're excited about that. Renee was very cute. She had her second annual kickball tournament for the second day of school. And so that was fun and the kids had a good time. It was super hot. I think she went and bought popsicles for the kids that played in the afternoon. Maybe the adults too, because it was very hot to stand up there. But they had a great time and it was a good way just to kick off the school year. So new cafeteria is going great. And like I said, besides just being extremely busy, it's been a great start overall to the year.
By the way, September tenth, everyone's...
Thank you, Jill.
Please come to school and be loved.
Jill said that's a...
They said it in the board.
Sorry, sorry. Well, that's what happens when you...
It's going to be replayed six thousand times. You're only going to be at school.
All right. Any other matters come before the board? Board member publicly comment? Well, adjourn the meeting. Thank you.